Camera lady, you ready? Two minutes. I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Order. We'll try this again. I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees regular meeting today's June 14th, 2017. Please pay, no, the time is 7:01. Please pay respects to the flag.
He does that when he's early.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda. I'm going to take item seven off the agenda. Don't you want to add this on too? And yes, we are going to add on the long awaited interlocal agreement with the Village of Oxford for emergency connections.
Where would you like that? Isn't that unfinished business?
It's unfinished, yeah.
It'll be under 11A. With that change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Questions on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Wright. Supervisor Dunn.
You're dating yourself. This isn't 1998.
I think I've here.
What was in those tones?
Right, yes.
Excuse me, fell out of the air about 47,000 feet.
I did. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Ron?
Just give you a quick update on the bond. Parking lots are pretty much done at Seymour. We had our second top coat put on the new tennis courts this past Monday, so they'll sit in cure for a month and then we'll paint them. Our local boys painting them for us at paying the basketball courts. Fence should go up next week on the tennis courts or two weeks in the new ADA seating areas. Jim Sharp submitted our observation lookout point for the Polleyan Trail seating area slash fishing dock to the DEQ a couple of weeks ago, Jim. So we should hear on that shortly, I would hope. Switching gears to the office, we're probably 60% done. If you'd like to come out, we've got electrical done, plumbing, started drywall today, all the windows are in, so that's pretty exciting. We're still on target for August, under budget, I'm happy to say. So if you'd like to come out and see that, we'd love to showcase, or have you come out and take a tour before we get everything up, so that's it.
Do you have any comment on Seltar?
Seltar will be fall, September, October. It sounds like everything's been done on our end, I mean, the township's end. Right now, it's in the corner of the Verizon company, so they're working out some details. But I talked to Bob Prisbill and he said September, October, so, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on items not on the agenda? Yes, Peter?
Hi. For those of you that don't know, my name's Peter Fredericks and I work at Canig Sand and Gravel over in Oxford. We actually have been out there since 1920, and although we're only running a small scale operation now, we have a huge parcel of land with a big tax bill. And what we have done recently is we brought in Tough Mudder to help us pay a portion of those taxes. So if you weren't familiar, it was about a 10,000 person event that we had June 3rd and 4th. They put on about 60 events across the country and they were based upon providing a source of revenue for the wounded warriors. So it was a charitable thing and they're still doing charity now. Anyway, I just wanted to mention, we had roughly 10,000 people in the community come in Saturday and Sunday. We felt that it was a very, very successful event that we would hope to do in the future and they would like to do it as well. We had an awful lot of happy and very respectful people that actually cleaned up very well and just a nice group of people, so I think it was a good exposure for the town. But then they also used local suppliers, local vendors. They brought in people coming and buying food and gas and groceries and so on in the community here. Anyway, I just wanted to say that that money is going towards paying our taxes. But I've also mentioned to Jack that I wanted to thank the police, thank Bill and Jack for their assistance and workingness, and the police and the fire and EMS, and even Curtis ran in it, so he can give you some updates.
Even the road commission?
And the road commission, yep. So we want to thank everyone. It was a great event and I mentioned to Jack that I would offer to make a contribution to the township as well, to say thanks to all the people for all your help, that I'll get with Jack and Bill and do something with that on a personal basis. So, great event, just want to let you know and say thanks to everyone that made it happen.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments on anything not on the agenda? We'll move on. Let's go on to the first reading, causing a police response ordinance. Skip, I'm going to ask you to come up. Skip McCarroll, he does our prosecutions for the township.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Board of Trustees. You have before you an ordinance to be ordained upon your vote of approval for causing a police response. General counsel has reviewed, refined it, and presented it to you in format. This ordinance allows prosecution upon the incident of a misdemeanor crime to allow a plea bargain to an attempt crime, which will reduce in half the amount of jail time a person could face. Typically, under township ordinances, a 90-day misdemeanor becomes a 45-day misdemeanor. Fines and costs would remain the same. This is an opportunity for someone who may not have had prior instances of conflict with the law, who clearly could be convicted if tried, or would plead to the straight offense, would be tagged with a 90-day misdemeanor. It allows it a reduction. It is a tool that we have used successfully for a number of years in Orion Township. The 523 District Court accepts it as being valid, as do other courts, and we believe it is in the best interests of the community to allow the prosecutor to have this ability to plea bargain in lieu of forcing jury trials in certain circumstances. It's typically used sparingly, but it is a good tool to have in the tool chest and I would hope that you would pass it. Any questions that I can answer, Mr. Supervisor?
Do you want to just go ahead and lump attempt to commit a crime ordinance and give us a little overview of that, too?
Yes, I apologize. The attempt to commit crime is what I spoke about. I had that sort of fixed in my mind. Causing a police response is an ability for us to take someone who has truly committed a crime, but it is an incident where most typically it's a neighbor dispute, a trespass, some sort of conflict, where the complaining witness now wishes to rethink the situation and not have that person prosecuted. We're confronted with the fact that a crime is committed and that police response has been required. In such an instance, we then take that criminal act and reduce it to a civil infraction with a maximum fine of $250. Although your ordinance has in it a cost recovery of $500, the Michigan Supreme Court has made very clear that local units of government cannot collect cost recovery on a criminal act without a statutory approval. That approval has not yet been forthcoming from the legislature. However, there are certain legislators that are looking at it because of certain incidents of criminal activities, such as fleeing and eluding and other things, where multiple agencies are involved and a cost recovery would be a benefit to the taxpayer. These are intentional acts where people basically take good taxpayers' monies and squander them, utilizing police resources because of their criminal conduct. So again, this is another ordinance that I would hope that the Board of Trustees would find available.
Domestic abuse, does that fall under this?
No. Domestic abuse charges are very difficult charges, and typically what I have seen in the experience of Orion Township where they do not have a domestic assault ordinance, those are all state cases. What deputies will typically do in the experience of Orion, and I haven't had one out here yet, I don't think, where it's been a domestic dispute, but they will charge disorderly conduct. And then what typically happens, unfortunately in many of these instances, is the complaining witness comes and wants to recant their story. And then I'm sort of forced to the position of saying, so, are you admitting you filed a false police report? Because that's a criminal act, you may want to speak to an attorney. And then we plea bargain from there. Domestic violence is a serious problem. Those types of cases are handled by county prosecutors typically and they do an excellent job. They're very difficult.
Now, you have been working with Gary Rentrup and he is, I know the answer, but he is okay with these?
Yes, as I mentioned in my introduction, his office reviewed everything and in fact reformatted it for a presentation to the clerk. The clerk and I just looked at the actual statute that we're referring to, the ordinance adoption. The statute does not become an attachment to it, it would just be the ordinance that would be entered. The statute stands on its own as a part of state law, it's there for informational purposes. Mr. Rentrup's office did ask a few questions, we had a great dialogue, and it's been presented to you with his recommendation. Not recommendation, so to speak, but it basically is saying that this is what you would pass should you choose to pass it. He has not conferred upon you any recommendation, I want to make that clear.
I move to set a second reading, a possible adoption of causing a police response ordinance. Set a second reading, a possible adoption, attempt to commit a crime ordinance to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting, July 12th, 2017, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Did that just cover, which one did that cover, Joe?
Both.
Both of them? Okay, yes.
When this comes back for the second reading, we'll have to insert the ordinance number into the ordinances. And then also, this ordinance indicates that it's effective 30 days following the date of publication. I don't know if that's acceptable to the board.
Can we do it immediately?
I believe Mr. Rentrup, if he were asked, would advise that it would be prudent to wait the 30 days under due process revisions and to comply precisely with state law. There's no harm by waiting 30 days. By doing it sooner, may give rise to a problem if we were to utilize it and it would be challenged later. We want to avoid that expense for the community.
Thank you for the explanation. Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Court Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you. Article nine? I'm sorry. Let's do 9A1, modify Article 3, 13, and 14, driveway side entry garage sidewalk amendments. Does anybody like to speak on this?
We got it the first reading.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the amendments to the Charter Township of Oxford zoning ordinance as seconded. One, amendments to Sections 3.8, 13.5B, and 14.3Q related driveway side entry garages and sidewalks. Two, amendments to Sections 9.7E, 9.8G related development entrance way signs. Three, amendments to Section 2.2 and 3.5 related bulk propane sales and dispensing stations. Four, amendments to Section 6.13H related open-air business outdoor sales and display of products as presented to be effective immediately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Court Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Onto Article nine signage?
Oh, that's all done.
Oh, everything's done?
Yep.
Wow. That skydiving took my breath away. Pete, do you have anything?
No.
Were you happy with the way things went out at the Tough Mudder?
Yes.
I just wanted to hear it again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Flanders with Fire Department who assisted with the drone for the Tough Mudders. It had a great job. He told you about my, well, that would be Bill Dunn, he's used High Heights.
You don't want to go skydiving with me?
Probably not. What do drones do? Well, actually, we got very good shots from a high level as to the performance of all the runners, all the activities going on. It will be on OCC TV. If you get a chance to go, check it out. We were able to get shots that otherwise you wouldn't be able to pick up on. And it works great for the TV production. Mr. Flanders, by the way, he has a pilot's license, which is a pretty tough job to get and I'm working on that as well right now, so hopefully there'll be two of us.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to unfinished business. Let's do the agreement with the village.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the Village of Oxford and the Charter Township of Oxford for emergency water connections as presented. authorized Supervisor William Dunn to sign the agreement behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Let's do a roll call again.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Court Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Let's move on to new business, patrol mountain bikes. Lieutenant Patterson or Sergeant Lenz?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sergeant Lenz. If you haven't met me already, I believe everybody on the board has. The sheriff's office, or I in particular, sent two of my deputies to a mountain bike course recently in hopes of procuring a set of mountain bikes that they can use for patrol within the parks, the Polleyan Trail, or the areas that are inaccessible to our motor vehicles, or otherwise we'd have to go in on foot to get back to these areas. They've been very effective in other communities such as Rochester Hills or Commerce Township for firework displays, or to, as we have here, lacrosse tournament where there's large crowds of people and we can't readily drive our patrol cars into an area to respond to an incident or a scene. It's always been, in the other communities, received very well from the community and it gives a positive view of law enforcement and also the services provided by the particular township or city. I'm requesting the purchase of one mountain bike with a cap price on it of $2,000. I priced them out and the best bike, or mountain bike I can get fully equipped for one of my police officers, cost about $1,300. And by the time we add lights system, which is a $200 purchase, and then the siren system for the bike is another $60 purchase, then any incidentals like bags or water bottle holders.
Training wheels?
And training wheels. Should be less than $2,000, which is why I have a cap on it. I've shopped around quite a bit and I think I got the best deal possible. But I think it's a positive thing for the community. It's something my officers enjoy using. It's a good look for the township as far as what police services are provided. And I'm coming to you to request this. This is not an item that's provided by the sheriff's office. Most the townships and cities purchase the bikes, they own the mountain bikes, but we're responsible to put our officers through the training and we hold all liability involved with them riding around on them. It's a week-long class that Deputy Williard, who's in the audience today, if you have any questions for him, and Deputy Mendocino just completed. It's pretty intense. I think on the final day, they rode somewhere between 20 and 40 miles out at Stony Creek. But I present it to you and I'm hoping you approve a purchase for at least one of the mountain bikes. Parks and Recreation earmarked some money and agreed to purchase one yesterday at their meeting. And I hope you'd seize the opportunity and match that and also purchase one for us.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of two police mountain bikes and any equipment necessary, not to exceed $4,500, with expenditure coming from account number 205-302-977.000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Was that one or two bikes, Joe?
Two bikes.
Mr. Pira, I'm counsel, so you're aware, one has been agreed to be purchased by the Parks and Rec Division, specifically to be owned by them but for use by the sheriff's office. And I'm only requesting the purchase of one.
I'll consider here for two.
Yeah, but he said...
We got approval for one yesterday and we're looking for approval for the second bike, just one of the two.
So you'd like to amend your motion?
We got only $2,000 now.
What, can I make a comment, please? Lieutenant Scott Patterson, Long County Sheriff's Office Association Commander. Also, as part of that, what we'd also like to do is to also advise you that we, in the past, about a year or so ago, we did obtain one used bike from our Parks and Recs unit. And as part of that, we discussed that we think we can get that other one, so we can have three working bikes, possibly refurbished. $300? That's what we're, so as part of that request, we'd like to use some of that money, if we were able to keep 300 back, to get that other one refurbished, because I'd like to also get another officer trained eventually down the road here. The officer I did have at the time, just to let you know, not only was it well received in other areas, it was well received here also. Deputy Slazinski was our officer that was trained here before and he's since, has worked in another area. He was positive feedback for being on the Polleyan Trail subdivisions, very well received, just to let you...
Would you prefer us purchase two then? The bike and the other one fixed, so there's two?
I think we, you know, well, Ron Davis was, those guys approved one through Parks and Recs through their budget.
That's a little crazy, Joe.
Last night, for $2,000. So that'll cover one of them. I think the $4,000 cap that we originally went for is, we believe we could get two new bikes up and running and also get the third bike refurbished, so that, down at the bike shop down here, they'll go through it, they'll put new pads on it, brakes on it, cables on it, go through the sprockets and everything like that and make sure that it's safe for the officer to use. So any of those things, I think we can have possibly, you know, two brand-new bikes, one refurbished bike, so three up and running for the substation.
Then I'll amend my motion to make it one police mountain bike and have that amount to be $2,250.
I'll amend my support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have funding for maintenance as you go along? You mentioned that you have a bike that needs maintenance on it. Do you have a maintenance fund?
Our maintenance fund right now, what we've used is, actually, our water fund from downstairs. Any money we make off of selling water out of a refrigerator or soda, I use that money as a petty cash fund for maintenance, buying tires, and any miscellaneous equipment. That seems to suffice for now. Maintenance on the bike should be relatively low and the local bike shop down in Lake Orion has been very kind to us in going over the bikes and working on them. So the maintenance fees should be minimal if none, if something major was to happen, I'll find a way to take care of it.
Sounds like you've thought of everything.
Just as a note, I believe the light item that he's referring to out of our police budget, to let you guys know, is a refund from the state of Michigan for us doing liquor stings. We get, I believe you can clarify this with Joe, I believe it's $8,700. And they do that every year. I think we've only requested and tapped into that one time when the new substation was built for a one-time only $5,000. And we still got the remaining to go back into our police budget. So I didn't, as a note, I might be coming back to the board as a possible request for, happy to discuss it with everybody on the side, it's not at the agenda right now, for something that we can get into, maybe, you know, a little limited amount of funds that we can get pre-approved for a yearly basis for things like that, so we can help service the needs of the community, because we have a lot of citizens coming in that like these types of things and we, especially when we put them into action.
Thank you. I have done my research and I knew that. Thank you.
Okay.
For the process, are you planning to have them bike from this facility, or are you going to have to buy bike racks to transport the bicycle to other locations?
We have a bike rack that was donated to our substation by Lieutenant Patterson. I also have two of them. If needed, I'd be more than willing to donate them. It's not uncommon for police officers like myself to buy miscellaneous equipment like that. And we make amends, but I appreciate your interest in whether or not we would need one.
Any other questions? Yes.
You say you'll be patrolling the Polleyan Trail?
As, patrolling all areas of Oxford Township. Polleyan Trail, Peter's property, that's very, areas that's very hard to get back to. Quite often, we have trespassers back there that we can't get to on our vehicles. And if we hop out on foot, usually they'll run in the other direction.
I stopped walking the Polleyan Trail when you guys stopped patrolling it, so, okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
No.
Court Wright, no. Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm glad this went through. I'm just going to make a comment why I said no. You guys know how I feel. We give the sheriff department over $2 million a year and I think they should be buying the bikes. It's part of your, it should be part of your contract. It's not the amount of money, it's the principle. And I think if you're going to do policing services for a community, they ought to give you the tools to do it. It's no different than the road commission wanting us to kick in and pave roads. You know, I just, I didn't want my opinion to sway, because I believe we need them and I really want them. It's just a personal feeling that I have.
I strongly appreciate your comments, sir. I agree.
Yes, Jack?
I have a strong personal feeling, too. I stand out in the rain, I stand out in the cold and I get these millages to go through to suppliers. Our sheriff's contract with the township, when these guys come to us and ask us for something that is not in the contract, with a 62% effective rate at closures on the crimes committed in this community, when they ask us for a tool that is not in our contract with the sheriff's department, we should look at it. Not the principle that we have a bone to pick with one individual, it's the process of keeping our Polleyan Trail safe, our parks safe, and the principle to me says this board did the right thing tonight. Thank you.
Well, I believe the board did the right thing. That's why I saved my comment until everybody voted. I just...
Well, I made my comment after your comment, so...
Yes.
Will these bikes remain Oxford Township property?
They will remain property of Oxford Township and will remain here throughout our entire patrol time or the life cycle of the bike. The quality of the mountain bikes are top of the line. And multiple officers throughout our agency are trained to use them. So even with the moving of officers based in...
There's a salvage value.
Well, I'm just wondering if for some reason we did away with the bike patrol, would we have the bicycles?
The president's been said on that in the past. There's been mixed equipment, things like copier, cameras for our interview rooms, surveillance cams, you know, all the monitors, all those types of things. There's been a mix and match over the course of on and off the 10 years that I've been out here, barring the year and nine months that I've been down, that I left around '08 to go down and supervise the warrants unit. There is a mix and match of some equipment pieces.
All right.
Solely belonging to the township and if need be, for some reason, if it ever came up, they're your property, they have the right to sell them.
All right.
Look at these like I look at the Waymaster scale that this township board bought many, many years ago and loaned out to Independence. When we found out we had an asset, the township board sold it to that township. So as long as they're here in our community, they'll be used. If we ever deem that they're not necessary anymore, we could then again sell them.
Well, I just want to say one thing, and one more thing, is over the years, I've supported the sheriff department wholeheartedly. I wasn't trying to diss the sheriff department, but I just have a feeling that this type of equipment should be supplied by the sheriff's. Ron, and then Jim.
Yeah, when I looked at this, I looked at two things. One, is it a need or is it a want? They said they need it. Two is how it's going to be financed. You know, they gave a good explanation of how it's going to be financed. I didn't see it as an issue. And I agree, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, so do I.
Thank you.
Ron?
Just tagging on Elgin, it was passed unanimously by the Parks and Rec Commission last night. They wanted to know what account we were going to take out of it. And as we usually do, when we negotiated our fence deal this year, we told the contractor that we were keeping the fence and the poles. So we scrapped the tennis courts, just the fence itself, we kept all the poles. And we got $250 just for the fence. So if you take the softball, four softball field, fences, and backstops, imagine that amount of fence plus the poles that we'll cut off. We'll scrap that and that's how we're going to pay our portion of buying a bicycle for.
There you go. Very good.
Okay, let's, does anybody else have a comment? We'll just move on. Let's move on to the ordinance review subcommittee. Yeah, please. Mr. Young?
Yep, Mike Young, acting chairman for the Planning Commission, Township of Oxford. I just want to give you an update. I think you all received the list, the master list of potential ordinances that need to be changed, also with the reasoning behind why some of the ordinance needs to be changed. What I want to give to you now is just an estimate, so you've got what we've got. It's basically outlining...
Think at it.
No, this is a little bit different. It outlines the number of times we think the committee may have to meet on each ordinance or each amendment. Also outlines a possible estimate for the number of hours needed by our planner to assist in modifying those amendments. As you can see, the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5... As you can see, the first, one, two, three, four, five items on the list have already been completed. It's come to my attention since becoming the acting chairman that we need to have a little more check and balances and control over what amendments, what amendments we're going after, how much we're spending on each amendment and how much bang for the buck we can get out of that work within a given timeframe. So to be brutally honest, I don't know what that budget was for the year for the subcommittee. I do know that there's a bit of a crunch at the moment, so hopefully we can kind of get this worked out. I'm looking to you as a board to kind of give me some guidance as to priority and where we want to spend any more additional monies to make these amendment changes.
Yes, Jack.
Bill, the board asked me to take this to the planning commission so that we had an understanding of what was being spent on what. For example, if you look, this is just planner hours, there's no lawyer fees in there if any of this has to go to rent drop. So there are additional charges on top of this. So this worksheet is good to provide direction to the planning commission, to the ordinance review subcommittee to work on those items so that if they do come to this board, it's, it's your flavor that they were working on it, not the planning commission's. Because if this board deems that it's silly or not worth the money and the money's already spent, you asked us to get the permission.
Or it's not going to pass.
Correct.
Right. We don't want to work on something that's not going to pass.
And I want to give you an example. We have some low, low lying fruit here, if you will. Just take single-family residential street tree requirements. They haven't started on it yet, but they're estimating one meeting and two planning hours to work on that. And what that means is a developer that's coming in to put in street trees, it gives them clear guidance of what they're going to do. Minimal cost to get it done, minimal impact on the developer, it's, it's a happier scenario working together. The one directly above it is state licensed residential facilities. They have two more meetings needed to do it and eight planning hours and plus lawyer hours to do it. The planning commission is now seeking your advice on which ones we should do.
Joe.
In my opinion, I've been reading all of these, townships are never a standstill creature. We evolve. This is part of the evolving process as things are changing, as our community's changing, this is stuff that has to be done. Would I like it, everything to remain the same? Sure, why not? But these, I mean, look at food trucks. There's things that are now coming up that we have to stay ahead of the curve on and that looking at these different items, I look at is the cost of doing business. We've got to keep ordinances updated. We can't be looking and going, well, let's keep the old sign ordinance. It worked for 10 years. We've got digital signs now, we've got, there's all different things coming our way. So I'd rather have us at least be ahead of the game than go, well, we don't want to spend the foreign meetings of 40 hours.
And to your point, Joe, you mentioned food trucks, it's not even on the radar of this committee, so.
Well, we'd had a call from somebody.
Right.
That wanted to do a food truck for, I think it was a graduation party or something. She said, what do I go about? Deanna says we don't have anything on the books right now. There's nothing we can do to regulate it. It's part of the evolving process. This is, you know, you have to keep everything up to date.
I could make a recommendation. We as a board should look at these, we as a board should take the input from like Joe, from Bill and Curtis, the people that are getting the ordinance complaints or ordinance misunderstandings at the counter and add some and put a live timeline together to take back to the planning commission to work on. We know why bulk propane sales and storage was brought up. We know why rezoning, add standards for approval is there. We know why the tree requirements is there. State licensed residential facilities, I don't know who put that on there. What would you like to do? That's the direction that Mike's looking for.
Yeah, I know from, from my perspective, I mean, we do a lot of PUD stuff, that's very important, but that's an awfully long process, okay? And something I don't want to kind of go over lightly, we should pay attention to that and try to give it some emphasis. But as Jack says, there are a few things on here that maybe we can get in and under the wire without too much, without too much trouble. In reference to Jack's item about the state licensed residential facilities, that came about sometime last fall when I think someone from that subcommittee knew there was a situation brewing.
And some discussion with our attorney is, Bill, if we remember the conversation right, you, you don't go and change your ordinance because you have somebody applying in your community for something. And now it's on this list. So what it is, we need to get on this list knowing all the facts that this board will approve.
I'd like to comment on the sign ordinance, 40 hours. Well, the village took three or four or five years to take care of their sign ordinance. Orion Township's taken years and years and for 40 hours, I think we need the sign ordinance worked on. I think that's a little low.
So do we want to set direction tonight or do we want to?
Look at this, Jack, it's like Elkview. I mean, there's things you're spending money on.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd rather not, but to keep your community moving forward, you have to keep it moving forward.
Yeah.
And that motion, and that, I'll make a motion to authorize a planning commission ordinance review subcommittee to proceed with the projects not started and in progress on the list provided on May 18th, 2017.
Moved. It's been moved.
A second.
There was a second, quiet second.
Elgin. Hey, I was just going to comment that according to the chart here, appears that the planning commission pretty much has a highway to what they want to see accomplished, both short, short term and long term. We just have to determine if they're on the same page as us in moving forward with this. And watching the planning commission meetings, I got to say that it's not a matter of just willy-nilly selecting what they're doing, they're very much detailed and selective in what they do, you know, and choosing. I have to compliment the planning commission board.
You know, that's not saying at our level we can't tweak it a little bit.
That's true, but I don't want to micromanage these guys either.
Exactly, but we need a framework. This is the framework.
Right, I'd like a framework from the board stating, you know, we are going A, B, C, D, and E, E being least important at the moment.
Yeah, that's why we took it there. This board requested us to manage it.
Right. That's why I want to go to what we're working on, when we work on it and we put the money into it as a community, we're going to pass this thing.
You know, in years past, we had ordinance that were worked on and we had thousands of dollars and then we get to the, gets to the township board and they go, we don't want this.
Right.
Load it down. That's just a waste. I appreciate.
Right.
The planning commission coming to this board and, you know, through Jack and yourself, doing it this way, this is the way it should be done.
Yes. Going, going forward after these are completed, was the process that the requests will come from the planning commission or from the review committee for future amendments?
It'll come from the planning commission. We set the committee on doing the work, getting the language correct, submitting it to the planning commission, then we discuss what's presented to us after those subcommittee meetings. If we're in agreement or we make tweaks to it, they bring it back, rework the language and then of course, planning commission will approve it or make a recommendation to township board to approve.
And then when these, when these are all completed for recommendation, will they come like a lump sum or as they're completed?
More than likely.
The bills will just keep trickling in.
They'll be one at a time. The ones that remain will probably be one at a time.
Curtis, for example, the first four, five, we just did them tonight.
Oh, yeah, I realize that.
Yeah, okay, so this is a living document, but I do want to capture like what Joe said, when we have somebody come in and we have an unclear ordinance on food trucks, it needs to get added to this document.
Sure.
So I would take that then to the planning commission and state that the township board or the, the building department is requesting that we review this or at least give you a projection of how many hours to spend on working on an ordinance proposed. And that way you would be kept informed, this document would be part of your inputs weekly or monthly and what would come forward, you wouldn't be blindsided by.
Any other questions? You got your direction, I believe.
We need to vote on that.
We haven't voted? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Let's move on to Treasurer Ferrari and the tax sale properties.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Board members, last Monday, the county sent us a letter saying these three parcels are going up for tax sale, asking us if we had any interest in it. So I spent all last week trying to figure out what to do on those. The first one was pretty easy. That one is just a little strip on the back of properties over there in South Coates that some guy bought on the DNR back in, I think, 90 or 91.
It's a black area, right, Joe?
Yeah. He really has no, cannot do anything with it. I never know why you've ever bought it. And I talked to each of the homeowners there and they said, no problem, we'll pay for our portion of it through back taxes. It cleans it up on our rolls and that's done. You'll never see that again because they'll all be added each of the parcels. That one was pretty simple.
Joe, how do you figure out the cost? I mean, we, they're, they're going to have to pay for the lot splits, right?
Oh, yeah.
So do you just?
I'll give them all an estimate.
You give them an estimate?
Well, I'll give them an estimate once, if this goes through because they're going to get new legals drawn and everything.
And administrative costs and all that'll be.
Oh, yeah. People are very, because it's so, this one's so inexpensive, that's kind of really a big point to those folks.
That makes sense.
Exactly, and they're just happy to get that property. They didn't, a couple of them didn't know they didn't own it. I said, well, you don't.
One, one question. I read somewhere in the document that as long as we sell it for what, the taxes are owed on it and there's no profit, we don't have to give the county anything.
That's exactly why I, I always want to cover our costs. I don't want chargebacks.
If we sell it.
Make a profit.
And make a profit.
The county gets the profit.
The county gets the profit. So we wouldn't want to be in the real estate business. In this instance, we're trying to protect our residents by stating, you've been mowing this grass back there, we're going to get it to you. It's going to cost you the back taxes, the survey, the lot split fees.
And it's, and it's helping our taxing units because if we don't get it and it doesn't sell for a tax sale, we could charge back all those back taxes.
Okay.
I'd rather avoid being charged back.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, I knew there was some county hand in there somewhere.
And the other two, I, I talked to the different property owners, by the time I finally got to the right folks, I talked to settlement of Manitou homeowners and after I talked to the developer, I guess the original idea of those two parcels was have them be dedicated to the homeowners association. Whatever happened, that never happened. So I checked with each of the property owners, management departments weren't interested. I couldn't get hold of anybody, Seventh-day Adventist Church, the parcel butts up there, Mr. Ferguson, he was not interested. I contacted Princeton and the settlement of Manitou folks and they're both interested. I really did some soul searching on that, figured we probably want to offer it to the homeowners because it should have been part of their subdivision anyway. If you talk to the gentleman that developed it, he doesn't know why they're ever separated. And I let Princeton know that too, they says, we understand that. And I think there's some folks from settlement Manitou here too as well.
And this property, property is just a wetland.
Yeah, pretty much.
The whole thing.
And then it become tax exempt, we take it, combine it with their master deed, I take it off the road, make it an open space, which it should have been back when settlement was first developed.
You'd make a contiguous space then and?
Yep. That one strip piece on the left and the big one would all be one piece, it'd be contiguous to their subdivision.
You have a motion, Joe?
I don't know if I hear from some of the homeowners, I think some of the property in that area.
Question. What happens if we decide not to purchase these?
That means it goes up for tax sale.
Right, what's the process?
Anybody can put a bid on it or nobody can put a bid on it.
But it would still remain as taxable land, correct?
No, because I'm sure whoever would buy it probably wouldn't want, and what could they do with it?
They can't do anything with it.
It's, it's, it's a nonusable piece.
But it's, it's a, has an assessed value though.
Yeah, but it should never have had an assessed value. You talk to the developer, he won't even tell you that. You can't do anything with it. And plus this piece appears also zoned multiple. I don't know if you, I think you're kind of helping to prevent a possible issue in the future. Somebody buys that piece from out of the area, oh, I'm going to put some condos on there. No, you can't. Why can't I?
Because it's a swamp.
Well, why can't you fill it in? I thought we had somebody else try to do that. I don't want to get into that, I've learned my lesson from that.
This is the third piece?
That's the third piece, yes.
Yeah.
Explain this one, Joe.
That's a piece that's right abutting up to settlement Manitou.
Okay.
I thought the apartments would be interested, they're not interested in anything, so. I don't know if you hear from the homeowners, some of those folks may have some.
I think it might be cut and dry. They want it, right?
Well.
I see everybody nodding their head, I don't have to hear from them.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the charter township of Oxford authorize that Supervisor William Dunn sign the necessary paperwork or to purchase for back taxes, parcels number P-04312015, P-043530016, and P-043530017, based on letters of interest and phone contacts from the adjacent property owners. And also further authorize a treasurer to split and combine P-043120015 with the abutting property owners. For parcels, P-043530016 and P-043530017, the township agrees us out to the settlement of Manitou homeowners association for back taxes. If they choose to pass on these, this purchase, these purchases, the property we sold to Princeton management for back taxes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Uh, Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
I'll be in contact. Thanks, guys. They're really good to work with.
There, there's been a little bit of talk about, since one of our inspectors died, we have a plaque for him. There was some talk about maybe getting a big boulder and putting it out there and putting plaques on it if someone dies. I, I went out and looked at a couple of boulders and they weigh between 5,000 and 10,000 pounds and I've checked with people and the biggest they can move locally is a couple thousand. I mean, I suppose I could go to the riggers. What's the board's thought on maybe getting something that would, you'd normally see in a cemetery, that they can come in and engrave whatever we'd like on it or maybe not do You know, maybe have something out here?
Well.
Or just forget about it.
What kind of content are you looking to put on this?
Not sure. But you know, while we had, we had an inspector put in 27 years, we could just start with 2006 if, you know, if someone dies and then, you know, on the board, you know, somewhere down the line, you know, some way to thank them, put it on there, you know, the years they served and just their name.
How large of a piece of granite are you looking for? How large of a piece of granite are you looking for?
Probably as big as we can get that they can move around. I mean, you know, just something we could put out here by a tree or, you know, even in the entrance. And again, we could either do that, buy a rock or do nothing.
My question is, is anybody ever going to look at it after it's been presented?
And does other communities?
If my name's on it, I don't care.
Is other communities doing the same thing or, you know, other communities, um?
I don't know.
You don't know?
But since we do have a plaque for, uh, the electrical inspector that's in the, uh-
Deputy Supervisor's office.
Supervisor's office. Got me thinking. Yes, you've done the same thing over at the parks.
Yeah, we've got a nice one at, uh, it's by the softball feels that we're going to move to our new offices, but it's a aluminum, looks like a bronze plaque on a rock. And it just thanks for all those people who have went before us to make what we do every day different and easier. So, you know, it's going to have all of our past commissioners on there, you know, for all their hard work. I mean, I don't care if people look at it or not. It's the fact that we acknowledge them for their hard work and, I mean, I couldn't help but sit there today and think of Sue. Everything that she gave to this board and this community. Why re, why not recognize her with a simple plaque?
Those people need a plaque while they're alive, not after they're gone.
I understand that and maybe that's what you do then. I mean, we should, that's just how it works though. We don't honor people until they pass and unfortunately that's the way society is, but it doesn't mean we still shouldn't honor their, their efforts, so.
Thank you, Ron.
I'd be glad to give you a boulder if you want to load it.
The problem, Peter, is, you know, uh, it doesn't, the boulder doesn't have to be too big to be tons. You know, if you're talking a boulder like that, it's, I don't-
Curtis did a tough mutter, he can take care of that for us.
I, I did go over to the Levy Corporation because I do deal more with them and they, they did the same thing. If we want a boulder, they've got a boulder, I just got to move it. I might have to go to the riggers union to find somebody to move it, but I was thinking a, a normal, one that's made.
Does Peter know somebody with a flat bed and an excavator that could move a, a large rock?
Probably could get you some made.
Then you could attach the bronze plaque to it. I mean, there's a cost in moving that rock. I know what it is.
Oh, no, I, I went, I went two or three places to try to find someone. First of all, I found out what size and the rock I wanted was over 6,000 tons or 6,000, yeah, 6,000 pounds, six to 8,000. And then trying to find someone to move it, it's, there are not a lot of people around.
It'd have to have the support of the sheriff to follow the truck.
Oh, we could talk them into that. Uh, or would you just like, uh, maybe something you would find in a cemetery that you can come up and be easy to, uh, engrave the names?
You've all been to Kid's Kingdom. We had that piece of Tennessee flagstone there that we moved ourselves. I mean, it's probably five feet high, but it's only three inches wide and it's sturdy once you've set it in a foundation. And then Tool Sport and Sign just come, that came out and sandblasted it right on site. So you could do that and that's a lot easier to move and we would be more than happy to, to assist you guys in accomplishing that too. And I think that was purchased at Orion Stone is where we got that, that flagstone.
Well, it's the board's pleasure. Any thoughts? If not, we'll move on.
Let's, let's talk about this after.
Well, we can bring it up, we can bring it up later. I, I just wanted the, the board to think about it and if you've got ideas, we can put it back on the agenda and, uh, do something.
I, I think that we should go ahead and do the boulder if there's any way we can get it moved to, to-
You'd like a boulder over a pla, or a-
Yeah, with a plaque on it, yeah. Or like whatever that Parks and Rec did, I think that sounds like a really nice way to do it.
Well, I, I could look into this and report back to the, uh, to the board. Is it a boulder?
A boulder.
Peter?
You may consider, you've got a new factory company in town, you may consider seeing what they could do because if you could make a square, a flat square thing like a table and put the plaque right inside of it, it might be easier to move than hold it.
We'll look into it and I'll report back. Can't believe we went longer than the village. Uh, sewer refund of credit balances, Clerk Wright.
Yes, uh, we've had an incident here where we had a resident paid a bill for, we had outstanding balances on taxes in sewer and the, the bills were $300 that they paid and it was applied against the sewer account. They called the township and wanted the money refunded. The policy that the township has instituted over the years is that no refunds will be issued and the money would go as a credit balance on future bills. So the reason I'm bringing this to the board is I need to get a decision on whether you want to continue this policy or whether you are in favor of refunding people that erroneously are charged, the money's applied to a, to a different account.
Yes.
I got to tell you, 300 bucks is a lot of money to some people and, uh, if you charge them, they may not take $86. It takes a while to get that back. Um, I'd be in favor of refunding that money.
Is that a motion?
I have a question.
I move that if it's-
There's still some conversation.
Yes.
Uh, I understand that originally he wanted this money to be applied for his taxes. Is that correct?
I don't think he said.
It wasn't specified.
It wasn't specified.
Okay.
So it was, it was-
Was he behind in taxes?
I don't know that answer.
Is he behind now, do you know?
I'm not in the tax department.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think he's behind.
Okay. I think that ought to be taken under consideration before we make a decision here. If he owes, if he owes money to the township, why would we give him money back?
We'll give that to him so then he can pay the county.
Yeah.
The original intent of the call was to pay that $300 toward taxes. It was applied toward the sewer account. They're calling to say, you know, I really need this money to pay my taxes, not have a credit balance for my sewer.
To the county.
Marge?
Um, I don't think that it should be anything over $86 that, or that should be refunded, but I do think anything greater than two pay, two sewer payments should be refunded.
The, the, it's all of the $86 is that usually what happens is there's going to be another sewer bill that's going to be issued by the time this is caught.
But $217 is much more than-
Exactly.
So I think two sewer payments would be sufficient. Anything more than double the sewer bill that's overpaid should be refunded to the rest of the-
Would you like to say instead of 86, it should be 172?
Yes.
Why don't you just put, that, that number's going to change all the time. Why don't you just put it to 200 or whatever?
Or why don't you just say double the amount of the-
It's two sewer payments?
Yeah.
Two, yeah.
Two sewer court payments.
Rather than, rather than a, than a number.
I move that if a sewer billing account resident, business, et cetera, overpays the amount, uh, do that creates a credit balance of two sewer payments or greater to their sewer account that upon written request of the Oxford Township Clerk's Office, they be issued a refund of the amount that was overpaid that created a credit balance in the sewer billing account. The amount of the refund requested is to be verified by the Oxford Township Clerk's Office.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, this was the township's mistake?
No. Purge has sent us a check and tells us what they're paying.
Then I agree with Marge, what's going on here?
No, they, they didn't specify, they just sent it on.
Lots of folks have sent us money saying, here, apply this.